Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the February 6th County Commission Meeting. If you have a side conversation and you don't want it to be recorded and put out on YouTube, would you take it out into the hallway? The mics at the top of the ceiling really do catch people's conversations. So I'd like to call the meeting to order, and Commissioner Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Rivera?
Here.
Commissioner Gosar also appear. You stand to join me for the pledge allegiance, I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 3 on the agenda, and if you need an agenda, they are up on the lectern, is the public hearing. And so the firsts, we have two this morning. The first one is the new life conditional use application, CU-02-23. I'd like to open that public hearing and we'll take comments for or against the new life conditional use application, CU-02-23. We'll take it first in the room and then we'll go online. So any comments for or against the new life conditional use application? How about online? Please raise your hand or just unmute. Last call, online and in person for the new life conditional use application, CU-02-23. Commissioners entertain a motion to close that public hearing?
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. The next public hearing is the Lucky Star Wind Variance Application, VAR-02-23. I entertain any comments for or against Lucky Star Wind Variance Application? We'll go first in person here and then we'll go online. All right, online, I'm looking at you. Any ideas about Lucky Star Wind Variance? Last call, in person and online. Commissioners entertain a motion for the Lucky Star Wind Variance?
So moved, second.
They're moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Those closes those public hearings. Item 4, comments from the public. If you'd like to make a comment, we'll go in person first. If you just step to the lectern and give us your name, and if you're for some other place than Albany County, let us know that, if not, we'll just assume you're from Albany County. Any comments, public comments? Sure, please come upstairs.
Thank you, Commissioner Gosar, Commissioner Rivera and Jones. I'm just here to advocate on behalf of the city's request to the county commission to be supportive of the new wayfinding signage project that they're trying to move forward here in Laramie. I honestly feel like it's a critical piece of opportunity to invest in our community that it allows us to reduce some of the visual clutter of multiple signage in the area, and it's something that has been at real need in our community for quite a few years. I apologize, I didn't introduce myself when I started, Sarah Brown Matthews. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah.
Anybody else like to make a public comment here? How about online? If you just raise your hand or unmute yourself, we hear a public comment from you. Last call, in person and online for public comments. Commissioners entertain a motion to close the public comment, please.
I move that we close the public comment, second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item 5, disclosures, Commissioner Jones, any?
None today.
Commissioner Rivera?
I have none.
And I have none also. Six, considerations of changes of the agenda. Jennifer, please.
Of course, Jennifer, it's an easy one to say.
I would like to add an item to present for approval, a change of the payment for the moving company for the Public Defender's Office. Our prior motion specified cowboy moving, and they used smooth movers because they had that not to exceed.
Can we put that at 48?
Sure, sure.
After we adjourn? Forty-eight?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, I thought it was forty-eight.
We could do it at forty-eight. So forty-eight, the moving company for the Public Defender's Office. Any other changes to the agenda? Awesome. Commissioners, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. That moves us to the second page, under the regular agenda, item 8, discuss community wayfinding signs initiative. Phil, good morning. Come on up, please. You have your packet, so thank you so much.
Great. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'm glad to give a quick presentation on the wayfinding initiative that is coming to a head now, but it started back in 2018 when we partnered with the University of Albany County Tourism Board and downtown Laramie to develop the City of Laramie Wayfinding Master Plan. We ended up with 53 locations, five of which have already been constructed that you may have already seen. So the layout and the design of all the remaining 48 signs is going to be following those. At this point, we are in the implementation phase. I'm not going to spend too much time on the plan itself, but it was the actually, you know, with the wayfinding master planning consultant group essentially that know, you know, where the best placement is, how do you connect the dots, how you get people to points of interest within the city. So right now, we're in the implementation phase. Given COVID and all the other factors, supply chain and all that, the price of these signs has gone up considerably from the estimate that we have in that plan. So we are actively soliciting funds from partners and from entities that are listed on the wayfinding signs themselves. Currently, we have $125,000 pledged from the Albany County Tourism Board Visit Laramie. We have Mr. Scott Larson here, Executive Director here in support, but if there's any questions for him, he indicated he's glad to come answer those. City of Laramie and their current budget draft also have a good chunk of change allocated. I probably shouldn't mention that amount because it's a draft budget, but if you care to look, it's there. We have Pilot Hill has pledged $10,000, as has the university because they are both prominently listed on the signs as well. But Albany County, I sent a letter to Chair Gosar, who shared it with you all, I'm sure, about, you know, the fact that Albany County points of interest, specifically the courthouse and so forth, are mentioned nine times on the signs. So at this point, we have an estimate that each sign manufacturing and installation is running about $7,500. So just to give you guys an idea, of course, we don't need an answer today. I'm just here to answer any questions, but we would like to start putting these signs in the spring. So we have an act, we're working on a contract right now with the local installer who installed the other five. So this is something we are going to do in the short term. You'll see these coming up. But Mr. Chair, I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Phil, appreciate it. Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Rivera, any questions?
I don't think I have any. Your packet was complete. I do like the color palette and understand the reason for omission of reds and yellows, but yeah.
Phil, how many of these, these assholes? The brick?
So that is, Mr. Chair, those four designs there, we actually only in this phase doing those first three. So those pedestrian oriented signs are something we've considered as consolidating some of the downtown signs. But as it is now, we are getting some funds in, and it looks like we can do the plan as laid out, the bigger signs, but that was really like if we had to consolidate, make one map and have just the points of interest for downtown listed on there. So to answer your questions, none of that design.
Short answer was.
Or a short answer was.
Awesome. And then are you, do you have a mounted mind as we come upon our budget season here?
Well, I just, I'll just mention again, like the cost of nine signs, move the map quickly here, is about $65,000 for the four, if the county wanted to contribute. Of course, there's other entities listed on those signs as well. So whatever the board's desire is there, just knowing that, you know, this is part of a nice framework, having people around it. I'll mention also here that we'd like to take a lot of signs down that would just be redundant with the delivery of these signs, which would also kind of clean up the landscape. But again, I'm really over answering here, but I'd say about $63,000 to $65,000 would be the cost for seven or for nine signs.
So how many times is Pilot Hill listed on their signs? How many, how many signs are they listed on?
Through your chair, Commissioner Jones, yes, they are currently not listed because when the plan was done in 2018, Pilot Hill was still very much in the phase, so they're presently listed.
So, so right now Pilot Hill's not going to be on any signs?
But I will say, I've met with Sarah Brown Matthews also here, she gave, and they've pledged, and we are going to revise some of those signs, and they've, their board has met Pilot Hill. They'd like to be on about, I think about 10 to 19 signs. So we're looking at those, how to connect the dots. But yeah, none of the signs have been manufactured yet. So we are planning to add Pilot Hill because it's such an important point of interest.
I think that I'm very interested in this way sign. However, Pilot Hill must be on the signs they need to be on.
So the current signs that show the way to Pilot Hill will remain up, like the ones coming in off the interstate and?
Well, I mean, through your chair again, Commissioner Rivera, yes. Our plan is to keep, I mean, the plan is to keep those up until there's a better sign in place that's more prominent. I mean, those are pretty small little brown signs that really don't catch the eye, but these would really do a better job. So the plan is to consolidate where possible, and of course, we're Pilot Hill.
Well, they kept me on every city.
Well, Sarah would love.
Cart cure, and by the way, this is the way to Pilot Hill.
Awesome. Any other questions, commissioners? Sarah, you have something?
I just didn't know if you wanted me to clarify anything. We're excited about the city's effort to include us in this wayfinding project. As Phil mentioned, back in 2018, we weren't ready to designate a trailhead for the area. The two large signs that are coming off the interstate will stay up to direct people past the neighborhoods, the Sherman Hills neighborhood, et cetera. But we hope to take down the one that's near Wendy's and be consolidated with one of the community wayfinding signs. Also have this opportunity to bring people in from the other entrances into Laramie, funnel them down to Third and Grand so that they see that we have businesses that they can spend money in, and then shoot them to the east toward Pilot Hill.
Phil, thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate it. Item 9, present for approval, petition for vacation of right-of-way for the following described property, the west boundary and southerly extension of the west line of Lot 11, Lot 55, town of Centennial, being the north 36 feet of First Street and running fence east along the south line of said Lot 55 to the east boundary and southerly extension of the east line of Lot 20, terminating at east boundary of the southerly extension of Lot 20, Lot 55, town of Centennial, Albany County, Wyoming, as reported in the Albany County Clerk's records, and appoint Karen Bowman as viewer, Jennifer.
Good morning, commissioners. This petition was submitted by Preston Hare, who I believe is here, along with John Erickson, who has been helping him with this petition. Mr. Hare's petition is to vacate that part of First Street where there's encroachment from the buildings like everything else in Centennial. I believe it leaves 44 feet of the existing right-of-way. And I would say if you have any questions about the petition, we can ask Mr. Hare to come up.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Hare? Please, if you have any comments, and then we'll have you here.
Do you guys have any questions about the proposed plan or any of the maps that are in that deal? Over the years, as you know, Centennial has been pretty, everything's got moved around and built upon. So we're trying to clean up what we can on our block. We've also got other business owners, and we're all on the same page trying to, all three of our property owners there are just trying to clear up what is basically in our backyards. It doesn't affect anybody's driving, it doesn't affect anybody's, it's still the sewer, the water, mains, everything is still, we're not even close to that. And we spoke with the town, or with the Centennial Water Board, and she's the one that suggested our setbacks to where they could still get in and maintain the water and the sewer, and it's all still in the right way of the street.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners?
I would just like to, Jesse Taylor?
Yeah.
I would just like to add one more thing. We represent all of the property owners on the entire Lot 55, so. Just so everybody is aware that everybody regarding Lot 55 is involved.
All on the same page, so okay.
I have a question. I could not tell from your maps, are there actual buildings in this vacation that you're proposing? Or are there, what's in there?
So there is probably some slight encroachments, but they are encroachments. I mean, it's not, it's not previously done by the previous property owners. There's, I mean, it's not 20 feet of encroachment out in there, but there is slight encroachments on some of the buildings.
Okay.
And we're trying to get it cleaned up to where it's on a tax records and just everything squared away with most of the county's taxes and everything.
Okay, and then if somebody were to ask you, this is just the street off that connects to Highway 130, and that'll make it well from your map, it looks like there is First Street.
Well, kind of. So Lot 55 ends before, before it gets onto 130.
That the right-of-way goes out to 130, yes?
No, 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 no. First Street, no, First Street is off of 130.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions. Any other questions? Commissioners? Thank you all. There are no further questions. I entertain a motion for item 9, please.
I move that we approve item 9 as presented, second.
They're moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same side? That motion carries, and we'll move for?
Oh, and appoint Karen Bowman as?
Second.
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 Moved and seconded, let's vote on that again. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you all, appreciate it. Item 10, present for consideration, Albany County Recreation Board application for sponsorship for the Medicine Bow Nordic Association. Our recreation board requests the amount of $11,000 to help with general operations of the association's ski trail maintenance and ski trail reroutes expansion program. Bailey, good morning.
Good morning. So you guys get me first. I just want to let you know, we had eight applications this year for the FY25 funding for Rec Board. It's going to be the same process of which we usually do previously. You're going to hear from all the Rec Board applicants, and then the agenda item after all of them is the resolution, and you guys are going to prioritize them. And then we'll print that resolution out for you guys to sign. So if you have any questions, applicants are all here, I can hear as well, but I'll pass it off to Kelly from Medicine Bow.
Okay, thanks, Bailey. Kelly, you're up. Thank you, Sarah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Kelly Steiner, Medicine Bow Nordic Association, requesting $11,000, same as last year. I'd be happy to answer any questions, give a brief update, or just please and thank you, and let you continue.
Commissioners, any questions for Kelly?
No. Kelly, you guys do a great job. Fantastic.
Thank you. We're doing great. Everything's good, so.
I would just, for a point of interest, how many ski er days so far do you have that?
No.
This year, I know it's been tough.
We had $27,000 last year.
Okay.
I could sure get that for you.
Ah, he does.
Yeah.
No, never mind.
It depends on the snow.
Right.
But I would say, I mean, it seems like more all the time, doesn't it?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, please and thank you, if you have any.
Thanks a lot, Kelly. Appreciate it. Item 11, present for consideration, Albany County Recreation Board application for sponsorship for the Laramie Trap Club. Our recreation board requests the amount of $12,000 to help with the purchase of clay targets. Who is here for the trap club? Anybody? How about online? Is anybody online for the trap club?
I'm just, I can't remember when I updated your packet. Their request actually did drop down to $12,000 from $13,000. I don't know that. Okay, it's perfect. But I don't see Jeff.
Okay. Oh. Somebody from the IT department has their hand up. Go ahead, IT, please.
Hey, Pete, this is Adam. I don't speak for the board directly, but I do participate out there every summer, so I can speak at least to the need for the clays and the request before you.
Okay, if you feel like it, get it.
As always, they have the clay shortage, and I know through COVID, it was hard to acquire clays. There was a general shortage across it, and any supplies that they did find came at exorbitant costs. I'm going to put my assumption forward and say that is why it's sitting before you today.
Thank you, Adam. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I have a question, Adam. So are they just trying to build up, and this word's going to sound bad, but I don't mean it to be bad. Are they trying to build up a stockpile so that they have, will always have clays on hand that's available for the shoots?
Part of it will be, I would assume, be a resupply. I believe the other side of that will be to post. I don't remember where state's at. If it's not here, it's going to be close to here either in this year or the next. I'm going off of memory, so I do apologize. But that could also play a large portion into it as well as just allowing the recreational as long as the registered shoots.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Adam, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Item 12, present for consideration, Albany County Recreation Board application for sponsorship for the Laramie Rifle Range. For a recreation board request in the amount of $33,314.16 to help with the construction of a shed structure for rimfire youth range. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Used to the city council. Call your councilors. But thank you for your time. I'm the president of the rifle range, and may I add, to the trap club, the price of clays has nearly doubled, so, you know, I understand what they're up against. This project is to build a shelter for the 22 rimfire range. We supply a lot of families, we have a lot of families use it. We also have done a lot of work with the Boy Scouts, and for longer range, the 4-H kids come out to us and a few FFA. We have no shelter for them currently. Last summer, when we had the Boy Scouts up for their merit badge shoot, they suffered from the wind and the sand considerably. Also, the firearms blown in suffer considerably too. This would at least provide a windbreak and some shade for them, and it would fill in the last of the structures down at the bottom. So we would have a complete range set down at the bottom. And we have looked at, we would probably contribute more, but last year's rains have destroyed our roads. So we're looking at about $40,000 in roadwork this year. But we're more than happy to kick in $10,000 on the cost of this, so we can get it done. It's a real priority for us to, it's used a lot by families, starting their children off right. So if there are any questions, we're happy to answer.
Is there any questions?
I don't have any questions. I do have a comment, and I think this is a very important project. I think that the development of young shooters is so important and that they be able to do it comfortably and not have it be a real chore because we want them to have fun and enjoy what they're doing and really learn all of the safety that needs to go along with firearms.
Yeah. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Thank you. Item 13, present for consideration, Albany County Recreation Board application for sponsorship for the Albany County Fairgrounds. Our recreation board requests the amount of $75,000 to help create a long-range development plan. Taylor, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. So in our application, you'll find the whole professional services estimate that goes over what would be included in that long-range development plan. Currently, we are working with older aging buildings that do need some work done to them, and within this long-range development plan, they will evaluate the buildings, the infrastructure that's currently there, to see if we can maintain it, improve it, or if it needs to be completely replaced. This would encompass about a five to 10-year plan in total on how to get the fairgrounds into a more modern aspect, plus longer than that in terms of revenue and growth in terms of the fairgrounds itself and the county. So in there, you'll see what the long-range development plan would include. The estimate itself is between $60,000 and $75,000 just because of the items that are in there. Once we start calling in individuals to do their portion of the review of the fairgrounds, some of those estimates may be higher, some of those bills may be higher. That's why the high end of this is $75,000.
Commissioners, any questions?
No, it's time we update the fairgrounds. Yes, I agree.
Thank you, Taylor. Item 14, present for consideration, Albany County Recreation Board application for sponsorship for Laramie BikeNet. For a recreation board request in the amount of $8,040. Anybody from Laramie BikeNet?
Greetings, commissioners, I'm online.
Morning, Richard. Go ahead, please.
All right, thank you. I'm Richard Verko, President of Laramie BikeNet. Thank you for consideration for our funding to make infrastructure improvement for our service in the multiple-use trails, winter grooming that we do in collaboration with the Medicine Bow Nordic Association and the U.S. Forest Service. And we're asking to improve, we've, over the years since the implementation of this, about five years now, we've had a big learning curve of how to do that on single track. And so we now have two, what are called Snow Dog. That's just a brand of a machine that does that. But we're unable to accommodate both of those machines up there during the winter in an operational function, and so we're looking at expanding the shed, actually, in this case, replacing the shed with one that would accommodate both Snow Dogs so that we're able to perform our service a little bit more efficiently.
Thank you, Richard. Commissioners, any questions? Thank you so much for joining us. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your consideration, appreciate it.
Item 15, on the third page, present for consideration, Albany County Recreation Board application for sponsorship for common outdoor grounds. For a recreation board request in the amount of $15,310 to help with the purchase of tools, equipment, storage, and operating expenses.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hello. My name's Nicole Boss, and I am the Program Manager for Common Outdoor Ground. We are requesting funding in order to continue expanding our tools that we use to help provide volunteer support for the sustainability of public lands. We have a really strong partnership with the U.S. Forest Service. We also are an explicitly collaborative organization, and we work with folks such as Pilot Hill and Wyoming Pathway, as in BikeNet, to make sure that we're maximizing our impact of our volunteer service. Are there any questions I could answer for you about our proposal?
Thank you, Nicole. Commissioners, any questions? Thank you. I've seen some pictures of restrooms that you guys have painted.
Oh, yeah, collaboration with Laramie Public Art.
Gorgeous.
Yeah.
Fantastic, yeah.
There are two more coming at Centennial Visitor Center in the spring, so that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 16, present for consideration, Albany County Recreation Board application for sponsorships for the Laramie Plain Civic Center. For a recreation board request in the amount of $12,983 to help with the LED lighting upgrade project. Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, my name's Jessica Brower. I'm the executive director at the Laramie Plain Civic Center. I know I've spoke to you before, and you guys have been longtime supporters of the Civic Center, uh, so thank you for that. This project is, as the title says, LED light upgrades. Um, we're looking to upgrade these light fixtures throughout the whole building to try to reduce energy costs, um, and to improve the, the lighting in the space. Uh, the request to you for twelve thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars is for the recreation spaces, um, and this is in partnership with ROI Energy, which works with Rocky Mountain Power. Um, they come and, uh, offer incentives to add these upgrades. Due to the stature of our building, we did have to work directly with Rocky Mountain Power to get, um, special approvals, um, on this, um, but I'm happy to answer any questions about our position on this project.
Jessica, any questions?
Um, did you make any applications for grants to help with this, other than this particular one?
Yes, so we are working on that right now. It has actually been really challenging to find grants that are a fit for a, um, nonprofit with the building of our size, because we're no longer a government entity. We aren't, um, we don't fall into a lot of the applications that, um, we could have previously. Um, so we're working to, uh, research grants and to try to piece this project together. Um, in particular, we're going to work with Wyoming Energy Authority. Their grant cycle opens up in March. Hey, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jessica. Appreciate it. Item seventeen, present for consideration Albany County Recreation Board application for sponsorship for the Albany County Public Library for a Recreation Board request in the amount of twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars to help with the purchase of audiovisual equipment. Good morning, Rachel.
Good morning, commissioners. Rachel Crocker, Drug Drove, um, Public Library. It's been a while since I've gotten to be here and chat with y'all. Um, so, yeah, so this is a request for twenty thousand dollars. This is actually a small sliver of a much larger project. So, in December, we were awarded a million-dollar infrastructure grant from the state to update our meeting room, our conference room, and to build on an activity center in the front of our building. There's that funky patio that is unusable because it doesn't have egress, and so the plan is to frame that in, so it actually becomes an additional space. Um, so this is just a small sliver. There were some expenses that were not allowable under that grant application, specifically anything that connected to the internet. We could not fund under that grant. Um, so this sliver of this project is for cameras, um, and TVs, essentially to allow us to do with those spaces what you guys have done with your commissioner chamber, um, that we could live stream events in our meeting room, um, allow people in the conference room to do telemedicine, other sorts of things, and then also from that activity center to give some, um, yeah, ability to live stream our report, um, events or activities or meetings that might be happening in there. So, yeah, happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah.
So, in your upgrade of the meeting room?
Yeah.
Um, have you included an American flag and a Wyoming state flag?
We have.
Be prominently displayed in that room?
We have included flags for that room.
Prominently displayed?
I mean, we will, I think it will depend on, right, that room is going to be used for, used for a wide and random array of things, so it'll be dependent on the event that is happening.
So, it's obvious that there's flags in there to use, or a meeting if they want to use.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any, any other questions? Thank you, Rachel. Appreciate it. All right, uh, yes, sir, please.
My name's Jesse Ballard. I'm with Laramie Trap Club.
Oh, okay. I understand there were some questions. I was a little late coming in, and Adam Wales covered for us while I wasn't here, so I just wanted to see if you guys had any questions I could answer about our application.
Adam answered my question very cleverly. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? No. Thank you very much for your consideration. All right, item eighteen, present for approval, Resolution twenty-two-four, zero-zero-four, Resolution Designating Recreation Board Request Priorities to the Albany County School District Number One Recreation Board for Funding Consideration in the Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-Four, Twenty-Twenty-Five. Everybody who applies probably understands that, uh, we'll set the priority, and the Recreation Board will make the ultimate determination. Uh, the school district is in charge of that, uh, board, so.
So, it's up to you guys. So, how would you like to set the priorities this year? Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to see.
Well, how much, how much money are we getting? This year. Well, so, the total for your request this year was, um, one, yeah, one, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and sixteen cents.
One hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Seven hundred and six dollars and sixteen cents.
Let's be sure we get sixteen cents.
And did you want to know what the rec board has this year as well, Terry?
Yes.
So, um, from what I'm aware of, um, they actually have funding from FY twenty-four that they're rolling over to FY twenty-five this year. So, we're looking, uh, upwards of six hundred thousand dollars total. And that includes all the requests from the county, all the requests from the city, and all the requests from the school district, as well as Rock River, if they have it this year. They have it in the past few years.
Okay, so, uh, we have a, a resolution with eight slots. However you guys want to do this, if you want to go all the way, if you have one at a time. I have a priority list that I worked on last night, but, um, I'm not sure everybody had that, so.
You want to discuss your priority list?
Sure.
Go down through what you have listed here, uh, like Medicine Bow Nordic Association's at one.
Sure, I can do that for you. Um, so what I had was, uh, the, uh, Laramie Plain Civic Center at number one. I had the Medicine Bow Nordic Association at two, Laramie Bike Net at three, Common Outdoor Ground four, Public Library five, Fairground six, Trap Club seven, and Rifle Range eight. Go ahead.
I had, um, Medicine Bow Nordic Association as one, and Laramie Bike Net as two, Albany County Public Library, Library at three, Laramie Plain Civic Center at four, Albany County Fairgrounds at five, um, Laramie Rifle Range at six, Common Outdoor Ground at seven, and Laramie Trap Club at eight.
Um, that's not necessarily the I, the way that I want to go with that, but I'm going to lose in the vote, so.
Well, let's hear your priority, Terry.
I, I think that we need to move, um, the fairgrounds much higher because of the number of people that are involved with activities at the fairgrounds, and I believe that the Rifle Range needs to go right up at the top also.
Okay, so, can I give it in your order of priority?
I didn't do a pre-order, so I, but the, the, the ones that are down there toward the bottom need to be moved higher. Uh, the Rifle Range definitely is a very youth-oriented group, and it's important that, um, for instance, this year alone is the largest group of children that have gone through under safety, that they've ever had go through under safety in Albany County. What they want to build out there will help nurture good shooting activity, and that's very, very important. And I was going to ask Tom, is that going to have heat, or is it just a windbreak?
We're looking just for the, uh, three-sided shelter to start, and like the other buildings, when we get a little further on, we may close it in and put it in half of it, uh, like we did last year with the two-hundred and a few years ago at the Los Angeles.
Um, like, I, I think that, um, the, uh, Civic Center, to update that lighting is very important, and I could certainly put that at the top. Um, the, um, I am endeared to the Trap Club, however, um, I think all of the rest of them are above what the Trap Club. They can fill it in however they want.
So, what's your number one?
The Civic Center.
I'm okay with.
Civic Center, second top, okay. I had Nordic Association two, you had it at one, and Terry had given us that.
Yeah, I, I would like to see the fairgrounds and the Rifle Range above the Nordic. Both of those are used absolutely all year round, and, and I, and I think they do a great job at the Nordic, but I would like to see the other two above.
I mean, I'm, I'm got to tell you, it's likely all of these will get more funding, is, is what I'm thinking, so.
Well, that's kind of where I.
So, I don't want to spend too much more time.
Every year, uh, that I've been doing this, all of the county requests have been funded. I mean, the rec board has kind of made us go out, has kind of requested us to advertise a little bit more, and I know the city did. I don't know how many applications the city got in this year. I know the city itself was putting some more applications in this year because there was some, a little bit more funding this year because of that rollover, but I've never seen anything get funded unless that, the rec board, um, completely disagrees that this is not a recreation thing. That's the only time I've seen them not.
So, I'm, I have kind of Mary East, the top four. I have Civic Center, Albany County Fairgrounds, Medicine Bow Arc Association, Laramie Rifle Range. And then from there, I'm Public Library, I don't know. Okay, I'm just going to put it out there. Laramie Public Library, Bike Net, um, Common Outdoor Ground, and that gives me how many of those is seven, eight, Laramie Trap Club.
I'm okay with works, yeah. Can you say three, buddy?
Sure. Uh, Laramie Plain Civic Center, Albany County Fairgrounds, Medicine Bow Nordic Association, Laramie Rifle Range, Albany County Public Library, Bike Net, Common Outdoor Ground, and Laramie Trap Club. I think that's eight. I entertain a motion for that.
I move that we approve the list in order as presented. Second?
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye, aye.
Aye, I oppose. Motion carries. Thank you so much for you guys' applications. Thank you for your work in the community. Really do appreciate it. Item nineteen, present for consideration Albany County Recreation Board application for sponsorship for the Laramie Wrestler, Wrestling Booster Club for the Fiscal Twenty-Four Recreation Board request in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars, thirty-three cents to help with the purchase of the remainder of the new wrestling mats.
So, um, this request actually came in with the FY twenty-five funding. Uh, one of the rec board, uh, members did get, would catch wind of it, and they wanted to put this on the, um, FY twenty-four funding, that they do still have a few extra funds, because it's just a kind of a continuation of that project that they did with FY twenty-four funding. So, it's in front of you on their request as rec board for the FY twenty-four funding and not FY twenty.
Luke, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners.
Hope everybody's doing well.
Sorry, it's messy. Um, I don't know if you followed or tracked the application very well on that, but the gist of it is basically, as we applied, as we were awarded the grants for twenty-four, and we applied for the mats, we found out that we were actually short. Um, and so what we ended up doing was we tried to start a fundraiser for the remainder, delayed some of our ordering for a little while, but we do have the bulk of it, the big square piece, the main piece has been ordered, and it'll be delivered to, uh, June thirteenth. The remainder, because if you've been up in the wrestling room at Laramie High School, it's a really odd shape. There's these doors and, and the, the, the kind of the outlined ears is the remainder that we asked for, for the, uh, fiscal year twenty-five. However, as Bailey's, uh, noted, uh, rec board caught wind of it and wanted to put the remainder on the fiscal year twenty-four grant as well. So, this is really just an ask for the completion of a project that we started.
You answered my question, because I could not figure out why this wasn't.
I, and I don't blame you at all.
I'm really tickled that the mats are going to be, that's great.
Thank you. We are too.
Sure, all right, anything?
Yeah, look, just looking at your, uh, map here, so what's to the side of each, that white space to the side of each of the new host mats? Is that storage or?
Um, so on the far side, um, kind of adjacent to the big C, um, that is storage. There's a storage closet back there that holds some of the equipment, previous year's equipments, um, back in there. There's also just, um, kind of above that C is where the rope climb is, and then if you kind of go down towards the LWBC, um, that's the, the entry doorway. It's just a really odd-shaped room. It's not square. It's, so it was difficult to try to get all the correct measurements, and it was difficult to try to get, you know, the, the company to really realize how to best do that. And you'll see the lions on there. Those are, those are sections. So, we did that intentionally in terms of each section can be added and then taken apart, so that we can roll those up and store them instead of desks being placed on top of those and then ruining them, so.
Nice, thank you.
You bet.
Any other? All right, so, so that's consideration. Item twenty, uh, present for approval, Resolution twenty-two-four, zero-zero-five, Resolution referencing Resolution twenty-two-three, zero-zero-five, Resolution Designating Recreation Project Request to the Albany County School District Number One Recreation Board for Funding Considerations from additional fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four funds. I entertain that motion.
I move.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve item twenty as presented. Second?
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye, aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Luke. Thank you, Bailey. Um, twenty-one, present for approval, Tax Roll Correction for Global Sign Acquisitions for LLC care of Crown Castle USA Inc. in the amount of three thousand, nine hundred and four dollars, ninety-five cents for the twenty-nineteen through twenty-twenty-three, which were state-assessed taxes. Chelsea, good morning. Thank you.
Yes, unfortunately, this was just, it's a tower. I had it listed on personal property, and it was being state-assessed, so I have to refund that personal property taxes for five years.
Commissioners, any questions? All right, I entertain a motion for twenty-one.
I move that we approve the refunding of the taxes on item twenty. Second?
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye, aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Chelsea. Item twenty-two, take from the table, The Prairie Sun, Prairie Sun Zoning District Amendment Application, ZDA dash zero-four dash two-three. David, good morning.
Um, yeah, so, we're just coming back again, and you guys just need to untable this, and, um, Bill Gavitch-Wrill is here to answer questions. I think that's kind of where we left off in the last one.
I move that we take, uh, item twenty-two from the table. Second?
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye, aye.
Aye. That motion carries. All right, twenty-three, present for consideration, The Prairie Sun Zoning District Amendment Application, ZDA dash zero-four dash two-three.
So, yeah, I guess we'll invite Phil to come up. Um, he's the fiscal planner. He already talked to him earlier, so.
Yep.
Um, he can answer your questions. He knows them all.
Okay, awesome.
Questions are all the answers.
Behold.
Yeah.
These are the answers.
Good. Yeah. Um, good morning, Phil. Thank you so much. And that, this was as much my request as anybody else. You guys had submitted a letter, um, uh, with negative thoughts about, uh, The Prairie Sun zoning district. Could you just give us an idea of what those thoughts were? You know, not have to go point by point, but just kind of your overall.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, um, the county planning office always engages us when there is a county subdivision proposed. We provide comments. Uh, as we all know, those comments are advisory-only in nature at this point in time, uh, due to changes in Wyoming state statute. Um, so the advisory comments that we provided on the Prairie Road subdivision was primarily based around the Laramie Area Growth Plan that was just approved last year by, by this, uh, body here, as well as, uh, Laramie City Council. In particular, this subdivision is proposed to be rural residential, uh, which is not exactly in line. Well, that's put, uh, it is not in line with the Laramie Area for a plan that, uh, has the area, um, proposed as a community commercial kind of cluster area with much higher density resident, uh, residential mixed use proposed, given its proximity to the airport, given the likelihood of it becoming a, uh, larger, uh, commercial core. Commercial core or at some point in the future. But it's important to note that that these comments and the the plan itself weren't done in isolation. This was a collaborative effort with the county planning and zoning board, as well as the city's planning commission, as well as the the elected bodies. That ultimately approved the plan. The the recommendations from this plan were. Were presented to stakeholders, presented at community meetings, we had a lot of participation, I think some of you may have even participated in some of those events. So I I just wanted to add that as well is that this isn't a staff recommendation, this is largely driven by community vision and input. So yeah, to sum up, our recommend, our our advisory comments back to the county planning staff was. That this needs to be reconsidered and and if if we want to align future development with Larry Laramie Growth Area Plan. Then something much more dense should be considered here, given its proximity to to the city. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Philip, any questions commissioners?
Well, this isn't a subdivision application, nor is it a annexation right now. Issue is just simply a zoning. How close is city to thinking about. Focusing on annexation in this area?
Through your chair, Commissioner Barrera, yes. At this point, there is still property wedge between the city boundary and this sub this proposed rezoning. That is that is going to be about from the looks of it, a five acre sub subdivision, five acre lot subdivision. You know, the annexation process from our side of things, the city never wants to forcibly annex anything. It's always a voluntary action by the property owner development. So at this point in time, if city services were requested at that site. Given that it's not adjacent to the city boundary, then an annexation agreement would need to be signed so that when it does become adjacent, that annexation would be required.
That they've not made that request. Or city services?
Correct.
Any other questions? Thank you, Philip, appreciate it. Go ahead, David, and I see Jared Ralph's on on the Zoom, so we'll give him a chance if he wants to.
Okay, I will note that there is a gentleman who would like to speak about this, so when you come to that point. I'll just note that the whole. You know, as you guys know, that part portion of this is commercial, so that's what their request is, commercial. The back two lots would be the rural residential, the commercial zone would fit in with with a lot of what the plan is saying. The only thing that doesn't fit in is those goes back rural or back rural residential lots. What the plan says is they, there's a suggestion of a three. Unit per acre density, and so it's basically the density that's out of whack. The use itself of residential is is congruent with with what's being proposed and with the plan. And obviously, plans are just plans, they're, we want to follow them and we use them for guidance. But I think there's a lot of points you could make to show that this is kind of following what is being suggested there. I think there are points to be made that maybe there aren't, that isn't following exactly what the plan says too. So I think you have to weigh both of those and when you're when you're making your decision, but I mean, that's that's all I wanted to add. But and point out that Mr. Berenson's here, like to speak in some.
Okay, any questions for David?
David, multifamily would essentially fit under the commercial.
Correct, yes, that's the only zone that we allow multifamily, it is our commercial zone.
Karen, any?
For David, no, we'd always call it backup.
All right, David, the major street plan and the commercials, since it's not co-located with major highway there, that would cause a little bit of difficulty. Or there would have to be some considerations, right, for for access to the commercial.
So yeah, the access is kind of weird, it's not coming straight off of the off of the highway. Which that is one thing in the in our comp plan, not just the the growth plan, that it does say it should be next to a. Public road and and that's not what the access proposed at this time. The major street plan does show that there's should be a connection through there, so if there ever was, if this did go forward and there was a subdivision, we would require them to reserve that. Not necessarily build that, but that would be a requirement of the application.
Thank you, Mr. David, I appreciate it, I'm gonna go to Mr. Ralph for the use there, I'll have you up next. Jared, go ahead, good morning.
Good morning, I'd just like to read an email, I had an email exchange with Mr. Gavithouler. Earlier on January twenty-ninth, addressing the same question, I'd just like to. Address another part of his response where he did, Philip did mention that the city does not, and I'm reading from his email now, the city does not actively seek the annexation of private properties. Annexation initiatives are initiated by the property owner. For those that interested, the annexation application form is available in at the following link, provides a link. And the annexation report must accompany the application meeting the standards set forth in Wyoming statutes fifteen dash one dash four oh two A. Next paragraph, a key finding finding from this part of the statute is that the area sought to be annexed is continuous or with, sorry, contiguous or with adjacent to. The annexing city or town. Considering this area does not satisfy this criterion, the applicant will be required to either seek annexation for the intervening property. To become adjacent to the city boundary or to negotiate an annexations agreement with the city, as he mentioned, I just wanted to emphasize that. There is privately owned property between my client's land and the city boundary. There is no agreement to annex this land, I currently have no agreements with the. Owner of this land to make any such negotiation on their. On their part, all I have is an access easement, which I thought came off the highway. I actually, and I have a commercial application from Y dot or a commercial application approve approval from Y dot. For commercial access, which I thought was part of the. Application, but I can provide that if there is some question over that.
Thank you, Jared. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Ralph?
Yes, I do have a question, I got a text message from Charity Johnson. And she said that that you did get a notice from the city planner stating that they have no legal or technical stake in the matter. Was that correct or can you expand on that?
Charity Johnson, I I I'm not familiar with her.
Charity's is Jerry's daughter.
Okay. I I'm not, I'm not sure what Charity's been out doing, my directive has been to get this zoning permit through.
Okay, I just wanted, because it would have seemed to me that something like this would have gone through you, so that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Sure, Barry, any other questions? Jared, when we talked last, there was some discussion about. Not interest on your clients moving from rural residential to small lot residential because of septic systems. Do you still maintain that position?
Well, well, as far as I know, I don't know, Charity might have said something, I don't want to. Speak at a turn there if there's a potential, but as far as I understand, the the. The directive we have now is, yeah, they want septic and. Well and septic on these proposed slots.
It's my understanding, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, small lot residential allows for well and septic in the county. And David's nodding affirmative, so that seems to be an issue that maybe was just not understood well. Also, there was a strip of land between the highway and what's being proposed. I took a look at that and I thought that I was told that it was Union Pacific ground, but it doesn't appear to be Union Pacific ground, it appears to be. A person by the name of Robin Hill, have you done that research and found that also to be the case, Mr. Ralph?
Robin is who granted us the easement, but she has no interest in annexes annexing to the city, so. That that point doesn't change as far as I know.
Yeah, but that is not, I think you you made a conversation with you and I about having a difficult time negotiating with the railroad who owned the strip of land between the highway. And this development and and that turned out not to be the case.
Yeah, we had a difficult time negotiating with Robin then.
Okay, fair enough, thank you so much, appreciate it, sir, please.
Hi commissioners, I've never spoke before, so.
No worries.
We're we're the buyers of the land. We signed a contract with Jerry Johnson for this land, it would be June eighteenth of twenty twenty. And that is how long we've been working on getting this subdivided. And it's none of your problem, but more engineering and other people's not getting rolling on this. So whatever agreement you made with the long arm of the city really shouldn't apply. We're asking that you guys approve this. We we don't want annexed into the city. We don't want anything to do with the city and we didn't realize the city was so close when we made this purchase offer, so. I just wanted to put that out, that part of the reason we were interested in the land was because it was in the county. I I'm a contractor here in Laramie and the city just gets more and more and more and they want more and more and more and it's making projects go away. And we don't want that, we want projects here. But the city wants this, the city wants that, the city, there, you gotta do what they say, it's a dictatorship. So I would ask that you guys not work with the city on this and. So I just wanted to talk to you guys, tell you that, you know, it is a commercial lot and then whoever buys the two lots in the back. Part of the reason Jerry asked for five acres is because septic systems are better on five acres than two acres. And people want, people from Albany County want land. They don't want to buy a little two acre lot, they don't want a a house lot, if they're looking out there, they want a bigger lot, so if you guys would take that into consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Your name is?
William Berens or Bill Berens.
Thank you, Phil, commissioners, any any questions for Mr. Berens? So much, appreciate it. David, anything to to wrap it up?
Just that, you know, I can see why this is a difficult decision, we just adopted that growth plan and. You know, I I think it just speaks to the the importance of putting this plan in play and to actually go out and do some zoning according to the plan, because that makes it a lot clearer. I just feel like, you know, the arguments can be made from both sides in following this and and we want to be good partners with the city, obviously, we don't want to, you know, hurt. Hurt development and growth of the city, so I I think that just makes it a difficult decision for you guys. But I mean, I do feel like, you know. We can make good arguments both ways on on whether this is a good project and really, this is a decision that's kind of legislative in nature because what what we allow here basically determines the rules on these properties. And we're just kind of doing doing this because requests came forward and this is what they want to do and. And yeah, this this is kind of the dill, this is, you have a recommendation from planning and zoning, you've had, you know, comments from staff, you've heard from the city and. And I I hope you have the information that you need to make make a good decision now.
Thanks, David. Commissioners, any any comments, I I have a few, so will we take a load on this one way or the other? Commissioner, if there are any comments?
Yeah, this is a hard decision. I can, I sympathize with the buyer, Mr. Berenson. I also really feel that at some point we have to start planning ahead for growth. And this was a plan that was adopted both by the county and the city. I just don't want to see what happened to Cheyenne happen here as far as. Allowing the city to expand to the west there. I'm. Yeah, it's a hard decision.
Mr. Jones, I did.
No, I think you need to follow the constitution and private property rights.
We try to do that every day here, I do have some comments. The growth area plan to actually be a plan, I think it has to be respected by both entities. And not be used when it suits your need, if you're the county or the city, and then not used when it doesn't suit your need. So that's my underlying thoughts about this. What is done, like David, I agree with you, what is done in this case does matter, right? I suspect if you look at Laramie, that this is a place where we probably will see poor development. If Laramie grows and all this, the ideas are that it will grow, so we do need to be cognizant of that. Application has has some inconsistencies for me and it needs to be cleaned up before it can be considered, even in the first introductory paragraph. Fifteen acres or twenty acres are used interchangeably. Strip of land was not owned by the railroads. Small lot residential do have septic systems available, now whether that's a good idea or whether it's not a good idea. That's something to be discussed, this is just not ready for prime time, this application, I think there's a solution here, I really do.
Why am I being punished for, why am I being punished for land being sold or been tabled multiple times?
Mr. Ralph? Thank you. Nobody's being punished for anything, right? There's a certain amount of professionalism that's expected from an application that could not be found in this application. I'm not alone in that discussion, five planning and zoning commissioners believe that also, so. Having to ask somebody to redo it is not a punishment, it's saying redo it. And. There is a solution and there is something, there is a win to be had here. So. It's clear to me that this is a tough decision, that it'll have lasting impact and that if we have a growth area management plan. In place, you need to use it, and so. Pretty sure it's clear where where my vote is, so I entertain a motion, item twenty-three.
I move that we deny the application with the proposed residential zoning and. I would like to see more of a high density urban residential zoning. And that would be the reason for denial of the application.
Based on the growth management plan?
Based on the prepared area plan.
Sarah, second. Second, so if we moved in second, any further discussion?
Yes, I'm gonna say. This is the third time this has been before us, okay? You should have brought up all these things in the very beginning. And what appears to me is that this application should have moved through smoothly. But instead, the majority on this commission. Has slow walked this application, costing everybody involved more money, more money, more money every time it's been tabled, now it's going to be denied. That's un-American and you guys should be just appalled at your behavior. Because what you're doing is you're stopping. Because what you're doing is you're stopping or hindering development all over Albany County with this. And shame on you.
Terry, no person in this room is less or more American than the other one. Thank you very much. And I don't appreciate those comments.
No, it doesn't matter if you appreciate them or not. You need to hear them.
Thank you, we hear them every morning. It's not, it's not new.
And it's going to keep on coming.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, none of those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same sign, please.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all, appreciate it. Item 24, present for consideration, the New Life Church conditional use application, CU-02-23. David, please.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the First Pentecostal Church doing business as New Life Church is the applicant for this, is the applicant here. They're requesting a conditional use to put a church on real residential property. They, this, this is north on Highway 30, close to Alloquat subdivision, those other subdivisions. This was submitted to review to a number of folks. Most of them had no comments. Laramie Rivers Conservation District did have some comments on erosion, fencing and wells. Game and Fish looked at this, and they did comment on noxious weeds, invasive grasses, protection of the Laramie River. And YDOT reviewed this. And they they commented on the construction within YDOT right of ways and drainage corridors. So the findings necessary for approval, there's a number of things they have to, that you'll have to find to this application. Of which they include the posting of the sign, publication, certified mailing, which has been done. And then that site plan is provided. And that this will not harm the the public health, safety and welfare of the community. That adequate public services are available and won't cause an undue burden on the county. And then there's a number of issues that have to be addressed or looked at. I'll just go through a few leapfrog or strip patterns of development. Basically, this this property is near the other residential areas out there, so it shouldn't be considered that. I mean, it's already his own rural residential. Let's see if there's anything else that pops out here. Traffic, they do have an access permit from YDOT, so that's been taken care of. They have plenty of room for parking. Yeah, those are, those are kind of the big ones with this. Staff has, staff has provided a complete, or the applicant has provided a complete application as addressed the potential impacts this use may cause. Upon approval, this conditional use application is only a typical application for a building would be required. If there's a sign, there'll be a sign permit that's required as well. Findings of fact, the information provided as part of the findings necessary for approval, staff analysis in this report are adopted as necessary findings for the approval of the applicant applied for conditional use. Conclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and compliance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. There was discussion during Planning and Zoning Commission meetings mostly around the the floodplain and the proximity to the river. And, yeah, just the wastewater system mostly. Planning and zoning commission ultimately recommended approval with a couple of conditions. One of be, one being any development is prohibited in the floodplain. And then the second one is any wastewater discharge greater than 2,000 gallons per day must receive enhanced treatment to ensure protection of waste or water quality. Just wanted to add a couple of comments to to these conditions. First, any development prohibited in the, will be prohibited in the floodplain, that would include fences, parking, roads. I think that maybe if if you wanted to go this route, that we might back off and just say any buildings or wastewater system has to be out of the floodplain. I would also note that we do have a floodplain resolution that's been adopted, and so there's specific standards that are in there already. The second one is talks about the wastewater discharge of greater than 2,000 gallons per day. Once it's 2,000 gallons per day, that's that's out of the county's hands. We don't have the right to regulate wastewater systems. So I'm not sure if DEQ would honor our our saying that it has to be an advanced treatment system or not. So that's another thing I just wanted to point up, point out. But ultimately, they did recommend approval with those conditions. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
You do?
I do, David. And I'm trying to remember the map. And there are little areas on the property that are in the flood zone, correct? But they're small areas and wouldn't affect the building.
Right.
Or even probably parking.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, there there's a portion of the property that, yeah, there's part that's in the floodplain and part that's not in the floodplain. And, yeah, I I don't think the applicant had any issues. I'm not sure if there, oh, yeah, he's here. So I I don't think there was any issues with the conditions as they were written. So that they might all be all the way out of the floodplain, but I just wanted to.
Well, that's that's the feeling that I got, is you weren't doing anything within that floodplain. So does that mean that he can't, they can't fence their property?
Technically, the way that our our definition of development is in our zoning regulations is pretty much anytime you disturb the land to do anything is developed. Whether we would be out there seeing, you know, going out there like, what are you doing?
Just turn it into Never Neverland?
Development makes it, yeah, if we use that term, I think it makes it difficult to do anything out there, so.
So in the, in the property owner next to this, where there's floodplain, are they grazing livestock? So it wouldn't be a problem just go ahead, fence out the floodplain and then allow that to be used for livestock? Okay, thank you.
I don't know plans. You have any?
Yeah, and not for David, more from Matt. I was in on the meeting for planning and zoning when you presented it all, and I appreciate you showing up here today as well. I guess I didn't realize that the church, are the church and the gym going to be two separate buildings? They're not connected at all?
It will be two separate buildings and won't be connected physically. That is correct, so it'll be two smaller buildings.
And do you anticipate renting out your facility or anyone in the community considering some events that could be accommodated there? Or is that not anything in the plan?
Our our church is a 90-year church that serves here in Albany County, has existed here for 90 years. Our ultimate desire is to serve the greater county, for the good of the county and the city. We're for Albany County, we're for Laramie. We want not only to benefit congregants that would attend on a Sunday morning and be a part of of our church family, but the greater good of the community. It's not a big desire that we have for rental income or anything like that for those property spaces. However, we do want to serve our community. And so if we can make our facilities available to the greater community for the good of the community, we would welcome that, as well as strategic partnerships with other nonprofits and community partners that would benefit from the use of our property or the county itself in terms of natural disasters or how we can come aside and be a part of emergency plans and different things like those. So, you know, the primary purpose is obviously a house of worship for our congregants, but we definitely want to serve the greater good of the communities.
I'm imagining, was this going to have cooking facilities?
It will have a kitchen. We're a Pentecostal church. We like to do potlucks and lunches and all those kinds of things. So, yeah, we'll, we'll have a kitchen there.
Yeah, I I appreciate the conversation at Planning and Zoning that you're very much aware of the floodplain and were willing to move your structures closer to Highway 287 to be away from that and all. If you decide to go with fencing, it will be wildlife friendly?
Yeah, we we would, you know, be willing to do that. Our our plan has always been to, for the construction to be along the road, closer to the road and and not to be toward the back of the property where the small portions of the floodplain are. Certainly, because this is a fenced out state and there are livestock that currently graze on the property, we want to erect some fencing there for the the purpose of of the protection of the livestock that are out there and and for that property. We haven't, you know, explored any type of fencing or whatever, whatever the recommendation would be for that, you know, we would like to to put some fences back there, you know, for the for the purpose of the property and the cattle situation that's there, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I entertain a motion for item 24. If there are no further questions.
I move that we approve item 24 as presented.
Second?
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, none of those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 25, present for consideration, the Lucky Star Wind variance application, VAR-02-23. David, please, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Lucky Star Wind Phase 2 LLC is the applicant for this project. They're requesting approval of variance from the height requirements for temporary met towers. And a number of reviews were solicited. Run bridge was consulted as well as our PT department, who found that this tower shouldn't interfere with any of our communication equipments. Laramie Rivers Conservation District previewed this and just mentioned some comments on erosion. YDOT did ask about access, which they'll have to have. Notice was provided for this project, posted sign, location, certified mailings is required. And then there's a number of of findings that need to be made to grant a variance. First is the granting of variance will not be detrimental to public health, safety or welfare or materially interest to the the other properties in the vicinity. The applicant's response basically is that it's kind of in the middle of nowhere and there's nothing out there, so it shouldn't hurt anything. So, and we would concur with that. I think it's three miles from the nearest residence. The second is the granting of a variance will not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations on other, on use of other properties in the district. So the applicant just mentions that the tower height is not intended to convey or any exclusive or permanent benefit to the applicant. I mean, it is, it is temporary in nature, it'll only be on the property for a couple of years. Tower height does not create any undue hardship or adverse effect on neighboring properties for general welfare of the community. Third thing, hardship, which is the basis for the variance application is not self-inflicted by the applicant. The applicant basically said that they they need to have a higher tower height to collect their data. As you know, the the towers are getting much taller than they used to be a few years ago. And this is necessary for them to to cite properly their their turbines for this project. And honestly, once they put the turbines, they will dwarf this tower, so. Granted, the variance has to be justified for one or more of the following reasons. Strict interpretation or enforcement of the development standards would result in practical difficulty or unnecessary physical hardship inconsistent with the purposes of this resolution. They mention that strict interpretation of development standard would be incongruent with intent and with curatorial collection of appropriate data. Another reason would be exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to decide the variance that do not generally apply in other properties in the same district. You know, or they they mentioned exceptional circumstances include the size of the private land that surrounds the proposed met tower and the inability to inflict impacts on residences or public in proximity. And then the strict interpretation or enforcement of the development standards would deprive the applicant of privileges enjoyed by the other property owners in the same district. Or the variance will will bring the applicant into substantial parity with other property owners in the same district. They just mentioned that this, again, this will curtail the ability to obtain data in the wind project. Other development projects are cited in the general area and and may have installment towers, structures, which is typical for this type of testing. So basically, just the staff discussion here, the variance is is required to allow the met tower to be tower taller than 200 feet in height. I will give a little background on our regulations. I mean, we we adopted our temporary tower regulations probably 13, 14 years ago. And at that time, the kind of the, what they were using was about 200 feet. That was kind of the going size because the the turbines at the time were much smaller. But since then, technology's changed, the towers are getting higher in order to get the good wind data, they need to to be able to go exceed that amount. So, so just for that, I mean, I mean, I I understand this this request. It makes sense to us, and it's not really not going to hurt anybody because of the proximity of of where it's going to be. And so the findings are necessary for approval, including applicant, the staff responses and staff analysis as reference to this report or adopted as findings, that the applicant has provided the board with adequate information that the requested and required findings, documentation, notice and notations have been satisfied satisfied by the applicant, and the same are incorporated herein. Conclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution, Chapter 5, Section 14. And then planning and zoning commission recommended unanimously to approve this, incorporating the staff analysis findings of fact and conclusions of law, as each of them are stated in this study. And I'll stand for questions, and I believe maybe there's some folks from the company.
Commissioners, any questions for David?
Yeah, David, this tower is temporary, right? It's 24 months?
Correct.
Just to get the information. So once those turbines are placed, this will be moved. Will they not need any kind of meteorology type of tower or anything given this kind of information?
I mean, that's a good, good question for them. I believe that they always are collecting information. And if, so with the WEX permit, if it was, if they had a met tower in a specific location, that's part of the WEX permit, so they can erect those. If it wasn't on there, which this wasn't on their their plans, that's why they're coming forward with this proposal right now. But but I I imagine they're going to continue to collect information. I want to collect information while they're.
So do they, they have to go through all of the same construction to build this, actually be more, because it's bigger? So they're going to have to come in and buy some in rebar and everything, just like they're building a regular tower?
Well, I think these are pretty, yeah, they're they're going to have to, you know, obviously purchase equipment and things. Most of these are, they go up pretty easily. There's probably just a small pad of, I I I don't know the construction process with this, but I know that they they usually just have a few guy wires and they put those things up pretty quickly and they can come down pretty quick.
Oh, because I was understanding it was like a full tower.
No, it's not like a permanent, like.
It's just a tower.
Yes, yeah.
That, okay, that'll be a whole bunch.
Any other questions? Thank you, David. Anybody from the wind developer want to talk about it? You don't have to if you don't want to.
Yeah, Mr. Commissioner, I can briefly just answer a few of the questions there. Just introduction, my name's Ricky Davis. I'm the Director of Development for the Lucky Star Wind Project. Thank you for, you know, for the Planning and Zoning Commission putting together the application packet and presenting our our proposal on behalf of Lucky Star Wind. The the first thing I just wanted to answer, just around the collection of long-term data, that's a good question. In our WEX permit, we actually did permit. In our WEX permit, we actually did permit, uh, permanent met mass that will be erected at the time the wind project is built. And in addition, all turbines, so at the top of all turbines, there are wind collection measurement data that are collected on a real-time basis via an anemometer on each of the wind turbines. And then in, in terms of the construction, uh, yeah, it's pretty simple for these temporary towers. They are just erected with a gen pole system. It takes about a day, sometimes two days, and then guy wires placed into the ground. They, the footprint is about, you know, two acres for the temporary met mass. So if there are any other questions, let us know, otherwise thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Who else? I entertain a motion for item twenty-five, please.
I move that we approve item twenty-five as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, now all those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you all, appreciate it. Item twenty-six present for consideration, an amended plat for lot one and lot two, block one, Gerald Small subdivision. Hopefully I'm saying that right.
I think so, we had a discussion about that this morning, I think it's Gerald.
Okay.
It is Gerald.
Good morning. James and Vicki Gerald have requested a boundary line adjustment for lot one and lot two, block one of the Gerald Small subdivision. Since this boundary line adjustment occurs within a plat subdivision, an amended plat must be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. This amended plat has been reviewed, everything looked great on our end, just pretty simple boundary line adjustment. They own both lots, so, so yeah, everything looked great. All the information is included, your approval is requested.
Thank you, Jory. Commissioners, any questions? I entertain a motion for twenty-six, please.
I move that we approve item twenty-six as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, now all those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Jory. Twenty-seven present for consideration, renewal of the 2023 Obol Home Park license for Chaparral Gardens Obol Home Park.
All right, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this is a very late application that has been submitted. I guess it just sizes the ongoing issues we're having to enforce these regulations and get people to pay their fees, take care of their Obol Home Parks. But we've got Chaparral Gardens that has finally completed those things and it's in cleanup on their property and it's ready to improve until July and then we'll try to get another one.
Commissioners, entertain a motion for discussion, excuse me. I entertain a motion for item twenty-seven, please.
I move that we approve item twenty-seven as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? I agree with you, David, that it's now February of 2024, Chaparral Gardens is now just approving, looking for a license due July of 2023. That, that would be an interesting place that we need to upgrade our regulations. I move in second. Any signal for the discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, David. Twenty-nine present for approval, invitation from M S dash I S A C to attend the 2024 I S A C Annual Meeting. As, uh, sorry, sorry about that, let's go to twenty-eight, let's not do twenty-nine, sorry about you. I got lost. Thank you, Kate, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Kate. Present for approval memorandum of understatement to the University of Wyoming Service Leadership and Community Engagement Office of the Albany County Emergency Management. Kate, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. So this proposed partnership is intended to help streamline the process for recruiting, pre-screening, and activating volunteers for exercises and incident support, and there is no cost associated with this agreement.
Commissioners, any questions? I entertain a motion for twenty-eight, please.
I move that we approve item twenty-eight as presented. Thank you.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, now all those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you so much, Kate.
Thank you.
Adam, sorry about that, but twenty-nine present for approval, invitation from M S dash I S A C to attend the 2024 I S A C Annual Meeting as a funded attendee, Adam.
Yes, so earlier last week, the I S A C had reached out and offered the funded attendee position set to attend the 2024 conference. They reimburse all the travel and state costs for my time at the conference. This is before use and approval because it's a named invitation, it's not offered to all I T staff, and in doing so, we wanted to be transparent in our dealings with the federal organization there.
Hey, have Commissioners any questions?
Where is this at?
Florida. In June.
In June.
And in August.
If there are no further questions, I entertain a motion for twenty-nine, please.
I move that we approve item twenty-nine as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, now all those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Thirty, ratified grant application to the Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Grant Program through the American Rescue Plan Act, funding in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand for the evaluation and maintenance reroutes of the schoolyard trail in the Pilot Hill Recreation Area. Bailey, good morning.
Morning. So you've actually seen this item a few times, this is just a ratification of the actual application. We, Sarah reached out to me, it looks like we did put in the wrong amount on the actual application, so the amount's one hundred eighty-two thousand seven hundred and ten, and the state was able to allow our correction. So if you have any questions for Sarah, she is here.
Commissioners, any questions? And Kayla, do you want that corrected amount of motion or?
Please. Is it one hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred and two dollars?
Seven hundred and ten dollars.
One eighty-two, seven-ten. Okay.
I entertain a motion for item thirty, then.
I move that we approve or ratify the grant application to the Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Grant Program through the American Rescue Plan, funding in the amount of one hundred eighty-two thousand seven hundred and two dollars?
Ten dollars.
What?
Seven hundred and ten dollars.
Okay. I really got hung up on two, okay? For the evaluation and maintenance reroutes of the schoolyard trail in the Pilot Hill Recreation Area.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, now all those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Sarah, thanks for giving the catch. Item thirty-one, ratified grant application to the Wyoming Outdoor Grant Program through the American Rescue Plan Act, funding in the amount of one hundred twenty-three thousand for the Albany County Fairgrounds Froze Nest Project, Bailey.
Um, so again, this one you've seen before as well, and this is just the fairgrounds application for that outdoor recreation funding. That outdoor recreation funding was due on the twenty-sixth, that's what we're rounding by, obviously.
Commissioners, any questions?
Kayla's here, yeah. Anybody has any questions on our project?
I entertain a motion for thirty-one, then, please.
I move that we ratify the grant application to the Wyoming Outdoor Grant Program through the American Rescue Plan Act, funding in the amount of one hundred twenty-three thousand for the Albany County Fairgrounds Froze Nest Project. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, now all those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thirty-two, ratified grant application to the Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Grant Program through the American Rescue Plan Act, funding in the amount of four million, three hundred forty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars for the youth sports complex development phase two project, Bailey.
Again, same thing, so this is our final application that we put through this year.
Commissioners, no questions, I entertain a motion for thirty-two.
I move that we approve item thirty-two as presented. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, now all those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
That motion carries. Item thirty-three, ratify year two continuing application for the Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, grants to expand substance abuse treatment capacity in adult treatment courts and adult tribal healing to wellness courts in the amount of three hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars to continue to support through expansion of the Albany County Court Supervised Treatment Program from September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four to September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Um, this is Heather's big federal funding grant that pays for adult drug court services. It is technically a five-year grant, however, the way SAMSA does things, they make us do continuation grants within those five years, so this is just that continuation grant. Her grant just started October one, so we didn't have much data or anything to work off of doing the continuation, but it was submitted on Friday because it was due.
Any other questions for Bailey?
Heather's not on today?
No, she had other obligations.
Okay, she mentioned delaying so much time to get that data, that there'll be possible penalties. Will that affect future grant awards?
She has been having problems with the data system that they have provided to us. She, we, she has been very transparent with our program officer, and we shouldn't see any backlash from it at this time. If things continue and that things are more on our end, then we could, but I, I have full confidence in Heather and she's going to work it out. I think she's done great ever since she stepped in and really picked up the program from where it was. So, I mean, it could eventually, but I don't think we're going to let, we're not, we're not going to let it happen.
I know Heather and you've worked it together, I mean, just being part of this sort of group. You guys feel on, on your part, is it being recognized then by the grantee, the grantor that it's on their end?
Uh, yeah, I mean, they have, they're, part of the problem too is we had a five-year, we just finished a five-year SAMSA grant, and then we were going into this new one. So Heather had questions in regards to, you know, all of our data that's in there, does it stay, do we have to re-enter? And they were a little slow at responding to us, along with some other budget things that they're slow responding to us. So we've been very transparent with them, we've saved everything we can. I mean, we're doing everything we should be doing on our end, that if things come back on us, Jennifer here is going to help us out and we'll get through it, but it shouldn't. I mean, we're doing everything we should be doing.
Good on you guys, I never doubted on your end.
Yeah.
If there are no further questions, I entertain a motion for thirty-three, please.
I move that we ratify the year two continued application for Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services especially grant. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, now all those in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
Chairman, may we take a short break?
Sure.
Thank you.
Take a five-minute break.
Yes, desperately.
How's it feeling?
I have a feeling.